Time is 6:00 PM, Council of Dennis and Alcon beans into regular session. Tonight's invocation will be given by Keith Taylor, Pastor Southside Baptist.
Lord, we're grateful for your love to us, we're grateful for your blessings in our lives, and the privilege of living at Dennis and Texas. We're grateful, Lord, for our council and how they serve our city. Lord, you know the business at hand tonight that I trust that you have directed, everything that's done, and might you be honored? Thank you, Alfred, your love to us and your blessings in Christ, and I pray. Amen.
Let's make this to define the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item number two, agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval, agenda is presented.
Have a motion, Councilmember Gott, second from Councilmember Malvern, all in favor by saying aye. Aye. Close like sign, motion carries, agenda item number three, public hearings, three A on the Parkdaleville Drive property.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We're here to hold two public hearings for a proposed annexation for the Parkdaleville project to be developed by Amtechs. As you know, we've been working with them for quite some time. It does look like they are moving forward with the tax credit approval process with the state. They do have to have their entitlements and due diligence done by September 15th, so that's what's expediting the process at this point. So, I recommend that the council hold both public hearings tonight.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council.
No, no action tonight, just hold the public hearings.
Just want to comment on this, as we, as a community of the last several years have looked to address all areas of housing, this too is one of our voices, we look to have workforce housing for our community, for our citizens. We continue to create jobs at record rates and unemployment's very low, we need to make sure we have adequate housing for all of our citizens and all the jobs in this community, so this really will win, I think. So that'll move, we'll have another public hearing.
Actually, right now, both I's, A and B are public hearings.
Very good. All right, agenda item three B, second public hearing on the Parkdale.
No other information. Same, same public hearing, same.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak to this part of the same property? There being none, the public hearing is closed, and this time we will take a motion from the council.
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion, Councilmember Gott, second from Councilman Spiegel, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Close like sign, motion carries, agenda item three C, first public hearing on the proposed tax rate, Ms. Lloyd.
Yes, Mayor and council, we're here tonight to hold our, conduct our first public hearing on the proposed tax rate. Truth in taxation rules mandate a governmental unit publish a proposed tax rate. Entities must hold two public hearings on the proposed tax rate, and those hearings, one being tonight, the first one, the second will be held September 6th at 6:00 PM, and the tax rate will be adopted at the September 12, 2016 special council meeting that we're going to hold at noon. All meetings are held in the council chambers here at 500 West Chestnut in Dennis. I do want to note that the proposed tax rate is one penny lower than the tax rate we've had in previous four years, so we, .64553377, I believe, .643377, and.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed, and as council may remember, last year we asked that these two public hearings be held, one in the evening, one during the day, for citizens to have a more diverse opportunity to be able to speak, so thank you staff for accommodating that. Okay. Agenda item three D, public hearing on posted unsafe structure at 625 East Highway 69,
Evening, Mayor and council. On June 15, 2016, light of blue was given notice to repair and demolish the structure at 625 East Highway 69. The owner has spelled the violation notice, this structure is unsafe and is a potential fire hazard. This has been sitting here for years, neglected, this has had a lot of termite damage, roof damage, it's been falling far. The porch on this is so dangerous, it's very difficult to even get in it, but the doors are open, so this is an attractive nuisance, and does have roof and foundation issues. A record of the violation notices and unsaid conditions of the property are on file in building department.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed, questions from council? Motion?
Go ahead. What is the city's policy on log cabins or log homes currently?
That would be zoning, and we did not have anything that prohibits it.
Okay. Just curious.
Motion?
Motion to demolish, agree.
Have a motion, Councilman Rawley, second from Councilman Malvern, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Close like sign, motion carries, agenda item three D, unsafe structure at six-frank circle, Ms. Lloyd.
During the July 18 council meeting, council moved to postpone this six-frank circle, twelve-frank circle, to this August 15 meeting, to give staff time to discuss with the property owner other options. They had wanted to bring in new, newer units to replace these, but under our zoning ordinance, this is not allowed, and we sent them the information to, for rezoning for a manufactured home district, and we haven't received any, we haven't received anything from them, but I did speak to Amir around 5:30, and they were stuck in traffic. They wanted to come and discuss this further.
Okay, story line, ma'am.
They were at 5:30. Now, they do have a permit for, for six, to refurbish it, I should show you the current pictures. This is six-frank circle, all the windows are home one. I just got a little bit stuck like this. There's, he said that if he cannot replace it, he does want to repair it.
Okay, well, I would think that we'll wait until, at least we get to the rest of the agenda if the property owners arrive, and we can address those at this time, so, but I need to make a, anything specific, we'll just come back to that.
We'll just come back to his.
Okay, so, at this time we'll skip three F, because it's the same situation, but different address.
Mayor, I have a quick question, I do notice that we have a complete recommendation to.
Oh, we're not talking about the second one yet, so, but you can come back to that. Agenda item three G, public hearing on the Reese Foods, or single project designation in the Texas Enterprise Zone program, Mr. Rex.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We've been working with Reese Foods and their consultant in creating a nomination ordinance that the city has to basically nominate Reese Foods to participate in this, as an enterprise project, and the ordinance is before you tonight, a public hearing is required, so we recommend that you hold that public hearing at this time. We do have representatives from Dennis and Development Alliance along with Reese Foods here, if there's any questions for them as well.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Questions from council? Obviously, great thing, David Owens is here from Reese Foods, David, if you could, did you bring anyone from your team with you here today?
Yeah, actually, this is Wendy Cook, she's our plant controller.
Very good.
She handles all the money, I just tell her what I can do.
Reese has, as we know, been a, been a great community partner in lots of endeavors. I was at the Welcome Back Teachers Breakfast this morning, they were well represented, giving out scholarships to our, to our teachers, for being able to do additional things in the classroom, so, then we appreciate you and Reese's families.
We really appreciate the support you guys have shown, you know, getting a part of the community, so, thank you.
Motion from council? Make sure I close the public hearing, have a motion from council?
Move for approval?
Second. Have a motion, Councilmember Gott, second from Councilman Malvern, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Close like sign, motion carries, we'll go back to agenda item three E, Ms. Boyd. Six-frank circle.
This was, six-frank circle was postponed from the July 18 meeting to the August 15 meeting, for further discussion on removing six-frank circles unit and replacing it with a newer unit. The current zoning does not allow that, this is commercially zoned, and they would need to rezone it to a manufactured home district. Ms. Alzarabi has been sent the notification and sent the information on changing this, or requesting a change to a manufactured home district. I do believe they are here now to discuss this.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda item? Name and address, please, for the record.
Anna Alzarabi, 5641 St. Thomas, claim of access to the 501.
So have we, have we made any progress in the last four weeks on what your vision is in this property?
Again, like I explained the last time, I would like have the opportunity to, anytime, if any of those I, units that is available, that I, I can either fix or replace with a newer model. I've been called by the city, they sent me information about it, and they say that newer model, it has to be normal than eight years old, and I think that's really good. My ideal plan is to have, like, not just the, where the unit are, because like lots is, is a flat, it's empty, so I would like to be able to utilize all the spaces that I have, and also the space that behind it, which is now, it's like, if you see the trees behind it, that's all like a jungle, and it's just all what we do, we cut the grass there, and there's nothing I can do with it, other than, you know, cut the grass, and so my ideal plan is to have it all planted together, according to the information they sent me. When we try to do the, when we ask if we need to rezon, they say, I think that this, my husband, they told him that you don't need to rezon, you need to find out if they will let you do that first, and then we can apply for rezoning, and so, I have respect on what they wanted to do. I think, meeting with the city, I would be able to, either if I find it feasible to just remodel it, I will do that, if I find it more effective to just replace it with a newer model, and I don't have to do all the work, and it would look nicer and more conform to the neighborhood, and to the city plan.
So the, the last time that you were here, I know one of the things that you were going to do is, is to go back and, and really look at the best use for that whole development area there, because you have other properties that currently don't, that currently are in code, but are, are close to being like this too in the, in the future without someone taking care of them, so have you had a chance to, to look at that?
Okay, we did not touch this one, and the other one to try to fix it, even though we started before this last city meeting, we started to take, to start working on it to try to make, repair it, and then we stopped because we have to come to the demolition meeting, and then at that time, when the architect said, or one of you guys, said, asked the question about replacing it, we, we, you introduced the idea, maybe we can do that, so that's why, my, we didn't do anything with it, so we lived it the way it is, we just worked on the other units to try to fix it and make it look nice and everything. So, my, my ideal idea, which is, that's what I was proposing in the last time, and I'm proposing again, my ideal idea is, if possible, there is three acres altogether, some of that three acres is taking a space which is a roadway to the house that's behind us, okay? So behind us, there is like, about three acres, my ideal idea again is to move those space, if I'd be able to move some of the ones that is nice, to the back, okay? And have them where I don't have to lose everything I've got, and, and use that to point something acres, and have that as a gated manufactured home unit area, and I'm not going to move them all in one day, because that costs so much money, but I want it to be able to do it one at a time, you know? So, if I'm able to move one to the back, I move it to the back, and then in the front, if I, if I'm not able to replace it, but I would like to do maybe, maybe something that's more like commercial, you know, something more nice, or replace it with a newer one in the front, and give it all like manufactured home gated community.
But as, as of yet, you've not been able to get with anyone on what that lands, but most suitable for, as far as the property, the land use, and how you would plat that out?
It's already planted, to spend money on it, I need to be able to find out if I am able to do it. It's been already planted, and I think the last one, we spoke with the city, which was a couple of months ago, they say townhomes or homes or small lots would work, so, but if I'm, if I wanted to put some townhomes in the back, I cannot keep this. I mean, this is not, nobody can want to live behind those smaller homes, so I'm thinking a better idea, so I want to build some townhomes, maybe build them in the front, but don't let me lose everything, let's keep, take all those, put them in the back, where nobody's seeing, behind, and we can have maybe a gate around it, so it would look nice, it would, it would be set, eighties or something, if it, if it have to be, or some of them start with the ones that we have, that is nice, and then as we, in the front, we start putting something nice that you wanted, but if I wanted to just wipe off all the investment and start all over again, this is so much money, and I'm not going to be able to do it.
Questions?
I have a question. Are you saying that you want to move these, these mobile homes? Six-frank circle and, what is it, nine? Twelve-frank circle, you want to move those back on the lot?
Yes, but not necessarily six-frank circle, because it's needed, so, six-frank circle would be, the only reason I'm not moving it up, because if I move it, if I take it out, it's gone. They, I have some other, like, I think number one, it's also a vacant lot, so the city said to me, you can either fix it, or it's gone, bye-bye, or this, I cannot let it go bye-bye, so I have to salvage it, even if the cost would be more than actually replacing it, so I was able to get something newer, that could have cost me way less, and then I ended fixing those units, because that's my only alternative, and in the back, because it used to be all like empty, so I used to do whatever I wanted, and then the city changed the code, like back in the seventies, but those units weren't there already, so when the code changed, it becomes non-conforming to the neighborhood, so now, I couldn't do anything other than take it and that's it, and so if I take anything off, it's lost, and if I have those mobile homes, and I want to salvage what I have, and I want to keep it, that's me fixing them to the best, and that's going to be the best choice for the city. So, in the back also, I have, it's zoned like, some of it commercial, and some of it is homes with 7,500 square foot lot, which is actually massive, for even for that area, so I'm, and with 75% and all the rest, so that's going to be, if you can have a 75% to rent, and also 7,500 lot, and it's in the back of a modern home, who can buy that? Nobody would, and I don't think Walmart's going to come behind that and build there, so it's going to be useless, and if I take those all off, then you have all those visitors coming up, and then you lose the business, and you lose, and you lose revenue as a city. So I say, let's move that away, if we move them to the back, now they are not in your face, okay, and I'll keep them up to code, at least, if I'm able to put a newer one, if I have vacant lots, I will be able to put some room, if I don't have a vacant lot, I'm going to just make sure that whatever is there, it's just as good.
Have you had a chance to visit with Ms. Lloyd, or anyone at the city since our last meeting?
I did not go, I think my husband went to talk to them about, with somebody, about the zoning and everything.
Yeah, so Amir's been talking to our staff, I've just been copying on the correspondence, and really the challenge is that it's a non-conforming use now, it's zone commercial, so, removing, removing it, an existing unit, and bringing in a new one is not an option. If they were to rezone to MHD, which is manufactured home district, there are very strict specifications and guidelines for, for that zone, and so, if they were to rezone to that, it would just increase the, the level of non-conformity of what's there, and they'd really have to replat, there's, there's a minimum 3,000 square feet that is required per unit, they, they wouldn't meet that with the current arrangement, and so, rezoning is just going to increase the non-conformity, so, again, where, where staff's at is that, if there's an existing unit that needs to be demolished or fixed up, those are really the two options, and then they need to explore the long-term options with the property. There needs to be some engineering and surveying done, which hasn't been done, that's just going to take time to do, and so, as far as pulling out an, an old trailer, replacing it with a new one, it's not, it's not that easy. Seems like it should be, but, that, even in that, if they were to rezone to the manufactured home district, there's, there's a minimum of, you can only have a 40-year-old trailer brought in, and it has to be on its, its own individual lots, and there has to be sidewalk improvements, so there's a lot of, a lot of requirements if they were to rezone to allow manufactured homes.
So, Judge, how many are there in total out there?
Nineteen.
How many?
Nineteen.
Nineteen?
Eighteen, actually, plus the.
Are they all in this same condition?
None.
So there, there was a number of issues with a lot of units, they've addressed all but these two, I believe, is that right, Betty?
And we have a permit for them to fix, but we did not put a fix until we get a solution and make sure that we are all to the same page. Now, some of, some of it, like he said in the agreement, like the manufactured home, it is something that maybe could be a, a long-term, and we have a long-term and a short-term goal, so my short-term goal would be, if the city is willing to help us with developing the street for the behind us, behind, the lot behind us, and we can have the manufactured home according to what he said, for, for years, I, I thought we talked eight years, but that's not a big deal, the idea, if we are able to do a turnout, so I'm thinking like, if we move some of those good units to the back, and we start doing like, one by one, the government, there's 3,000 square foot, and we have it individually on, because when it's individually on, we just rent in the land, and then people will take more care of it and everything, so we should be able to have people rent in the space rather than rent in the, the property itself, okay? And in the front, as we start moving those properties to the back, you know, the ones that is usable, then in the front, we start thinking about smashing it into something that you, you like, you know, something that is nice.
You know, my comment would be, unfortunately, what you're trying to accomplish is really, it's more of something that needs to be accomplished in the county, I mean, that's the reason we have restrictions, I, I don't, I don't see us ever getting to the point of where you're trying to head, let's be honest with you. I mean, does anyone else have a comment, I mean, as far as the fact that we're going to add additional mobile homes, or we're going to move them to the back of the property, I just don't, I don't see us ever getting there. Judge, would you agree with that?
I mean, if they, they could rezone to MHD, if the council approved that, but the number of units that they would be able to fit on three acres is not going to be 18 or 19 like they've got now, and there's going to be significant investment on streets and sidewalks and landscaping and things that, that may be prohibitive as well. You know, I, I think our recommendation is that they pull permits on these two units, you know, typically a council will give them six months to, to do work, to bring them up to code, I think they'll, you know, that it'll be up to them if they decide that's worth the investment, if it is, then make the improvements, and they're back up to code, and the, and the use can continue, and then they can do some long-term looking at the property to figure out what to do. It's, it's difficult with redevelopment to phase it on such a small parcel, you know, you talked about moving some units to the back and keeping some in meantime, and I understand that may be necessary from a cash flow standpoint, but, you know, our, our code really is, is encouraging, is, is encouraging redevelopment, but in a way that's kind of comprehensive looking, and, and take one swipe at it instead of kind of piecemeal, especially on such a small piece, that's really difficult, and that's what I was speaking to, I mean, these abilities.
We have a, we already have a, and we can fix them, and we want it to fix them, but we would be able to fix them, if the city weren't happy, and they want to fix it, so we would be able to do it.
Is there anyone else that has anything to offer to this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Well, I'll wait for a motion, and I'll, I'll explain in a moment.
Just have one question, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to remember, was there not a permit pulled, and it was pulled in June, or, so we're, we're some two months into the, but we could extend it, we could.
Yeah, or probably, I would think we've started from today, she, they intentionally didn't do the work because of the last meeting four weeks ago.
Betty, if this trailer's in such bad shape, or, oh, I'm wearing, if you have to tear it all the way down to the steel frame, is that still in compliance to totally rebuild it from the frame of?
Would they have to be a component?
No, what I'm asking, how far can you tear something down and be still considered that you're remodeling versus rebuilding? If you tear it down to.
To the steel frame, then that's, that's not a remodel, that's, that's completely greasing, I don't think that's what the plan is, they're not, they're not trying to.
I was planning to maybe raise the wall a little bit, maybe a little bit higher, and trying to keep as much, the frame as much as possible, so, and maybe add some windows, and that's what we want the permit for. The other thing I was, because your question, I was thinking about, sometimes like some of the property, if I have an add-on, like an add-on component, like that maybe has been built in, that would be possible?
An add-on.
Like if I add, like, if I add a component that, like, let's say I want to buy a garage, a detached garage, and add it to it instead of building one, that would be possible?
If you have room for it.
If I have those.
But the, the challenge is, again, it's a commercial zone, so it's a non-conforming use, if you add on to it, it's going to increase the level of non-conformity, which we couldn't permit.
So, so this is what I'll tell you, if the council so chooses to make the motion, what we typically do, when a property owner thinks that they can salvage a property that's on the demolition list, is we'll give you six months to complete the work, from the day of the permit, which, we know that situation, so I would think the council would make a motion, if, if, that it would be from today, six months from today, to complete the work. to complete the work. And the, I just want to make sure you're, you're clear before you spend one dollar on it, that you, you visit with our chief building official and make sure you know everything that is required to bring it up to code. Because I'd hate for you to get fifteen thousand dollars into this deal and you think you're done and she says you still have another twice that amount to get it going. So, just make sure you know everything that's going to be required and what level it takes to bring it to code before you do that.
Absolutely. Can I ask something else? Okay. In, in our property, there's like, the damage that was for the neighborhood and everything, it's right in the front, which is really ugly. And, and it gives also a lot of people in the street think it is a public trash. So they come in and dump the trash and that causes fines and, and unnecessary expense. Plus, it looks ugly again. And I want to see if the solution can be done to this, even though it's maybe not part of this.
When, can't talk about that, it's not part of this agenda item, but I would encourage you to visit with her and she, and she can help come up with some solutions. Is there a motion from council?
Just one question. Six, number six is the one that already has the permit pulled?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
There's two units, six and twenty-five.
Twelve.
They both have permits?
Both have permits.
And we'll get to the second one here. Motion from council?
I'll move to, to grant a, a six-month extension to bring the property up to code with the time beginning today.
I'll say it. Is there a motion from Councilwoman Goss, second from Councilman Spiegel, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries. And just to be clear, so the council just voted to move forward with the demolition. Subject two that weren't getting complete in six months. Okay. Agenda item four F, public hearing on unsafe structure at twelve Frank Circle, Ms. Floyd?
Yes, this is also a continuation of the council meeting from July eighteenth with the same information, that was for six Frank Circle. And this is twelve. And they do have a permit to remodel this. And that's the last picture.
This is the public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda item?
And that's Abby, five-six-four-one, saying comments, again, I think so, seven-five, zero, one.
Anything new to add?
Same.
Okay. Anyone here else here wishing to speak to this agenda item? Being that the public hearing is closed, motion from council?
Can I ask one question? In, in the remodel plans for, like for instance, this, this property twelve, you know, this one appears to be more difficult in my opinion to remodel than the first at located number six, just from the style and the construction of that mobile home. In that, in that work that you're planning to do, will it include some resurfacing of the exterior? I mean, with it being that metal siding like that, will it include new underpinning items? The underpinning was in poor condition. What, what's kind of your plan as far as, what, what do we, let me ask you this before you answer. What do you expect that we'll look at six months from now when this comes back up on the agenda? Like what will the pictures appear, any kind of paint new picture?
I, I believe it's going to have some banouts, it's going to have more windows, because I'm, I'm planning to have more windows. Um, I'm hoping to be able to change some of the blue. And I wanted to make it look more, more like the other private.
Could we go to the exterior picture here? I have the same concern, council. Okay, so I hear, I mean, you got the, you got the den about halfway up and the den along the bottom. So you're going to, all this can be gone?
Yes.
This part here, so it's all going to be?
Yes.
And here's some more here with the underpinnings indicated.
It's all going to go away.
Okay.
Okay. Well, and Mrs. Floyd, let me ask you kind of a two-part question. What, where does our minimum property standards fall in terms of not only the code violations, but also minimum property standards? Does that apply in this case?
Yes, and they have been marking minimum property standard.
I knew they had, okay.
With the rest of theirs, so yes, it will definitely apply in this case too. So these will have to be done inside and out. Instead of just for a minimum property standard to the exterior.
Right, right.
Then these, these also have to be done inside. So we're done.
Motion from council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move for approval with demolition with a granting of the six-month extension of the permit that she's already pulled beginning today.
I'll say it. Motion from Councilwoman Goss, second from Councilman Spiegel, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries. Agenda item three G, public hearing, sorry, two thousand four A, take action on contract architecture design for three hundred West Main Street.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Closed contracts before you tonight will provide architectural design and construction-based services for the renovation of three hundred West Main Street, which the city recently purchased to be a future city hall building. Uh, the payment to the architect is, is supposed to be seven point five percent of the project cost, which is estimated around two million dollars. So we're looking at a hundred and fifty thousand dollar fee to the architect. David Baca Studio is the, is the contractor on this and just looking for council's approval of the contract at this time. I can answer any questions, my.
Your motion?
Sure. Questions?
Motion.
Mostly approved.
Second. And motion from Councilwoman Riley, second from Councilwoman Alvin, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries, agenda four B, updated on twenty-seventeen budget.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Here to continue our updates to council on the, on the budget. We provided all the fund balance sheets for general fund, utility fund. You'll see that we're, we're balanced after putting in everything that we've disclosed into this budget. Uh, we are at sixty-nine days of reserve proposed after the fiscal twenty-seventeen budget. So we're well within our, our range of sixty to ninety days of reserve. A utility fund, same thing, we have positive balance and, and sixty-eight days of reserve proposed in the, in the budget. On the rainy day fund side, utilizing most of our funds that will come into rainy day fund for, for capital and, and one-time expenses, looking at purchasing some equipment and different things for the, for the city this upcoming year. Street improvement fund, same thing here, have some money coming in from general fund and, and then for various projects, Chestnut Street, um, street maintenance, our program there and some other projects as well. Capital project fund review, again, some equipment purchases and, and still coming up with a positive balance after fiscal twenty-seventeen. On the Parks and Rec side, a couple of changes here that I think we updated since the last slide is that in addition to the trail project of Water Blue Park, our matching funds that are, that are in there, we're also proposing to use from the Water Blue Park fee fund, an additional two hundred thousand dollars to put into Water Blue Park. Uh, the Parks and Rec apartment is working with Parks Advisory Board and, and looking at the Water Blue Park master plan to decide where to spend those, that, that funding. And then there's an additional eighty thousand dollars in here for park improvements in one of the other parks in our system as well, looking at the park implementation plan and getting that back on track as well. Um, so in kind of a summary sheet showing capital and, and equipment expenses this year, the city's able to fund about just over two million dollars with the capital expenses in the upcoming fiscal year. So, we have a lot of requests, over five million dollars, and we're able to fund a pretty good portion of that. So I appreciate the creativity of our finance staff and, and getting as much in the budget as we can. Um, this, this list is what you've seen before as far as some of the significant expenses in the, in the budget we have in there right now. And I did want to revisit a topic that we talked about at the budget retreat in terms of street maintenance, this is one of our, our big initiatives right now. Um, so really, we, if you recall, we did a pavement survey back in January last year. We came out with a pavement condition index of around sixty-two point seven eight for the city. And looking at the anticipated improvements over the next, over the next fiscal year through twenty-seventeen, about two point four million dollars worth of street work, that's going to give us our PCI a significant boost. We think it's going to end, end up at about sixty-five for the next year. And so one of the questions that council had, I know, was what is that number going to get us up to? So sixty-five is really what we're looking at. And then what's it going to take us to have funding to sustain us at that level? And so we reviewed a few options of how we could fund that amount moving forward. And our staff recommendation to this point is, is that we use some of the savings that we're going to be anticipating in twenty-eighteen when our electricity rates go down significantly, dedicating that to street funds and then also continue to allocate a portion of our franchise fee revenue toward street maintenance as well. Between those two sources, we think we can generate about six hundred and seventy thousand dollars annually. Uh, and that will help us sustain that figure, that PCI index at around sixty-five. Primarily, we're doing, using that money to go to crack seal and melon overlay. So quite a significant amount of money if you think in terms of the three hundred thousand dollars that the city used to spend manually on melon overlay, really being able to, you know, more than double that number and really have a significant improvement, even after we spend a whole bunch of money next year as well. So, we think that's possible and, and looking at our budget forecast and would recommend that moving forward. There were some, some questions about PCI and kind of what, what that means to the city. And so I want to give our new public works director, Bobby Attaberry, a few minutes to talk about the PCI and give some examples there and also talk about some of the strategies that we're using in our pavement management program.
Thank you, Jud. Mayor, council, PCI really in simple terms is like a grade in school. It's a rating of your street between one and one hundred. So one being the lowest, one hundred being the best. Most people look at a PCI as like you did in school, if I got a seventy, I'm passing. If I've got a seventy-five, I've got to be plus. That's not necessarily true all the time. Uh, but we, we took a couple of pictures just to give you an idea. And you see on the one on the left, that's a PCI of sixty-three. The one on the right is a PCI of seventy-five and that's with a survey that we did in January. We went out and took those pictures. You can probably see a close-up on your screens there. On the one on the left, you see the alligator cracking in the middle of the road there. That's what makes the difference in that PCI score. That truck that comes in has the digitized cameras that take such a fine picture of that street and it calculates all those cracks and, and it also calculates the ride of the street. It calculates any rutting that you might have in that out, in that asphalt. Um, so that gives you an idea of what PCI means. Obviously, you also put together solutions to raise that PCI. And in any of these programs and the software, you can put whatever you want in there as your strategies. We could put rebuild everything with concrete if we wanted to. We couldn't afford it, nobody can. So what we looked at is crack sealing is a preventative measure. That's something that we're doing, we want to continue to do that. And I believe by the year two thousand eighteen, I want to have that up to ten percent of our football network of streets. We have a hundred and seventy-five centerline miles of streets. And if we can do seventeen miles of crack sealing a year about two thousand eighteen, we're doing ten percent of maintenance on our streets. The micro paving, we did some of that this weekend, I'm sure you've seen it around town. Uh, that is actually a mossa-fied asphalt, but polymer or cement will aggregate in it. It's a better method than slurry seal and slurry seal is something I am not recommending at all that we use as a strategy. The micro paving is good if you have a street that has a PCI of sixty or above and it will basically give you three to five years more life on that street. So it extends the life and allows us to get by with a lower funding level in the years out. Uh, the melon overlay is certainly the best thing to do, as much as we can do of that and afford it. Uh, and if we do nothing, if we were to just say we're not going to do anything between now and two thousand twenty, our PCI would be down in the fifties. So I believe that with what we're doing in sixteen and in seventeen and then a six hundred and seventy thousand dollar budget on the years out, we can maintain in that range of sixty-two to sixty-five and continue to do our crack sealing and all the preventative maintenance things that we can do.
Any questions from council on the streets?
Clarification, long-term goal then is to maintain sixty-two, sixty-five PCI?
Yeah, I think so. I, it, I mean, we could do seventy, but the numbers would be pretty scary if we got up to seventy or seventy-five. Uh, most cities, most cities feel pretty good with anything above sixty. Uh, you know, a lot of newer cities that have concrete streets, you could, you could go take that truck out on a brand-new concrete street that had just been done and you wouldn't get a hundred when that truck goes over that street and raises it. So what I'm saying is, is those numbers sometimes vary back and forth. And I think for me, it's go out and look at what a sixty-five is based on what we've done. And if we can maintain at that level and keep the crack sealed and do some micro slurry to extend the life as we go forward and then do all the melon overlay that we can do, we're going to have a good street system in about five years.
Thank you. Questions on that? So, so in, in summary then, based on what we're seeing in the slides, next year we'll be spending approximately two point three million dollars on streets.
That's correct.
We'll up one and a half of that from CPG, the one time, and the decision, the recommendation is to go ahead and spend all that funding upfront, which I think is great. So two point three million dollars next year and then about six hundred and seventy thousand the years moving forward. Yeah, that's.
And to give you a perspective, with that money, we will be over, melon overlaying about nine centerline miles of streets. So nine centerline miles is down the center, if you figure both sides, then you're really doing eighteen lane miles of streets with that, with that money for next year.
Next year, yeah. And, and again, with that in perspective, back when we, we had our overlay program that was, I think, met, met, met very well from our citizens as we were spending three hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year in street overlay. So this is, this is going to have a huge impact on our street quality.
It gives us a good head start and then we can, we can maintain and probably with the six hundred and sixty, seventy thousand dollars if oil prices stay where they're at, the asphalt, it's about the same price. Then we could get by with about five months of streets each year with that money.
On melon overlay.
That's right.
What's our plan for communicating this to our citizens as far as, so everybody's got a feeling on what we're doing? Is there a plan to do that as far as how we're going to roll it out, which streets we're going to address first? Is it high, high-shu streets or conditions of streets? I think it's important we communicate that to our citizens so they understand what we're doing and because at the speed we're doing this, it's going to look like we're not doing anything.
I agree. They're going to see a lot of activity next year for sure. And I think that we can develop a plan to do that. In the two weeks I've been here, I've got this much done, so that's something to add to the list to get that done. But yes, very definitely, we need to let the citizens know what we're doing and where we're doing it and why we're doing it.
Jud, I definitely suggest that that's a major part of our improvement progress report that we send out every year. And our list, at the end, in the first quarter this year is a little later, probably, that would be perfect timing for that.
Will do that. Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure folks not just see the big picture, but know what's going to happen on their street too, because that's usually where they run into concern is what's happening in my front yard type of things. And we'll, we'll take care of both and let them know where our plan is.
Anything else on the budget?
Not yet.
Agenda item four C, take action on contract with Piazza Construction for THF Park.
So excited to bring before you the next step in the THF Park project. So back in May, we released a request for proposals for construction management submissions and got two submissions. We have vetted those proposals, interviewed both firms and are recommending moving forward with Piazza Construction. and are recommending moving forward with Piazza Construction for construction management of this project. It'll really be broken up into two phases. First will be a pre-construction phase, which is covered in the contract you see before you. That's where Piazza will work with our architect, Matera Studio, on the design from 50% where we're at now through 100%. At that point, they'll give us a gross maximum price for the project. And then we'll move forward at that point with, with a construction management contract or an addendum to what's happened now tonight to move forward to construction stage. So this is a good process, I feel, for the park because it'll involve the contractor early on in design phase. They can help us with estimates and constructability and give us, give us some good advice as we look to move forward with design. So with that, I would recommend approval of the, the contract with Piazza Construction.
Questions?
Motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Has a motion from councilman Malvin, second from councilman McGott, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion carries. We don't have anything for the second session tonight, I believe. So with that, 6:50 more, we stand the term.